I'd like to call the meeting to order and welcome everybody to the August 25th, 2020, at 6:00 PM Planning Commission meeting. First item of business is to approve the meeting minutes from the July 28th, 2020 regular meeting and the July 28th, 2020 public hearing.
Move to approve.
We have a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Our second.
We have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. Our first item of business, site plan, power equipment company requested by Michael Dewey. Property located at Waldron Road and International Boulevard, tax map 17, parcel 5.01, C2 highway service commercial and I2 heavy industrial zoning districts. Property owned by Bramco Inc. Mr. Logan.
Thank you. This property is located on Waldron Road and you remember the site plan was approved, well, some of you remember, site plan was approved in September of 2017 to build the building there that is now power equipment. So that's about a 57,000 square foot building and this site plan is to add a rental ready area and associated parking areas south of the building and also to make some other changes on the front side near Waldron Road and we'll go over those in just a minute. You can see it is zoned I2 on the zoning map. Most of the parcel is I2 and there is, the red areas are C2 zoned and through this process, this summer of working with power equipment, they originally had some of the rental ready area that was crossing over into the C2 zones and the city would like to keep those C2 zones open for any possible future retail that might come. So they did make some changes and now the rental ready area is out of the C2 area, so that's good. Some pictures of the site and the building that's fairly new, they do have brick in the front and then the surface area in the back is metal construction. So that's the original plan from June and then this sketch was provided by the applicant and you can just see, so the red hatched area was, is the area that the city is trying to keep open, that's the C2 zoned area and the green area to the, behind, to the back is where their rental ready area will be. And so this is the plan that they submitted most recently and it's in your packet. And so they've clouded three main areas. So again, this is the L-shaped rental ready area to the south and then they're adding two concrete pads to the north side of the building and then they're adding concrete, concrete surface next to Waldron Road in the front of the building. And none of these changes involve any vertical construction, there's no actual structures being built, it's just pervious surface that's been added to the site and concrete that's been added to the site. And one more review of the site plan with those three areas and I believe, they've been here a few times, so a lot of the technical comments have been worked through and I believe there is one comment left from engineering, so I'll let Mr. Leach speak to that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Leach, please.
Mr. Chairman, Board, as I commented last time, by the definition put forth in the zoning ordinance, as originally proposed, the basically addition area doesn't meet our definition of dustless surface. Now, to my understanding, there was an agreement or some discussion with board members as to, you know, perhaps swapping that, which is what's shown in the plan that's presented before you. Of course, my job isn't, you know, to negotiate those types of things, I just have to give you the strictest definition of zoning ordinance and if you would like to, you know, vote one way or another on that swap, that is the board's pleasure.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Any questions or comments from the board? We'll entertain a motion.
Chairman, with all the items that's been discussed and what things have worked out, I'll make a motion to accept or submit it.
Motion to accept or submit it. We have a second?
Our second.
Second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. Thank you. Item number two has been deferred. We will move on to item number three. Site plan 450 New Sanford Road, requested by Kim Lee Horn. Property located at 450 New Sanford Road, tax map 29, parcel 5.14, I2 heavy industrial zoning district, property owned by Pro Lodges. Mr. Logan.
Thank you. So this is a request for site plan approval on New Sanford Road and this is 450 New Sanford Road and I believe the applicant has, since the original submittal, which was about 60 days ago or so, I think they've done some changes or requested changes with the address. So it originally started as 450 New Sanford and I think with those changes, they now have 400 printed on their plans, but anyway, the tax map and parcel number is the same site, so that's not changed. So it's still map 29, parcel 5 dot 14. This is zoned I2 along with most, all of the neighboring property out there, this dark navy blue color is the I2 zone and photos of the site, so there's the 90-degree curve in New Sanford Road and just beyond that is where these pictures were taken. So you can see in the distance is another distribution center and I believe that's Bargain Hunt and I can't remember the other name, but anyway, those two buildings have been there for several years. But you can see here on this road, just a gravel shoulder and primarily this site is just a few kind of new growth, I guess, younger trees, it's been cleared at some point in the past, but it's, it's not real heavily forested, but there are just trees scattered and some of this area in this photo is also detention area and will be used for detention for this site. So getting to the building that they're proposing, the building will total about 184,000 square feet and they have provided parking spaces for 139 cars and they have spaces in the back for 47 tractor trailers and they're also building an access road that will connect to New Sanford and that road is, the pavement is roughly 38 feet, give or take, 38 feet wide. So that'll be the access road off of New Sanford and then the other drive aisles are shown as 24 feet wide where the cars would park. And this parcel is not in overlay, so there's no overlay provisions for the site. Some of the comments over the last couple of months had to do with landscaping and originally they didn't have any landscaping around the parking area where the trucks would go in the back and so they've been working on that and the new landscape plan shows the plannings as required by city ordinance, so those comments have been removed. Of course, they still have landscaping in the front, so that's good and there were no other planning and I don't see any other engineering comments either, so that's all been taken care of. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any questions or comments from the board?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Mayor, call.
Was sidewalks at this location resolved? I remember there was some discussion on it at the workshop, but...
You're with the project, sir. If you would state your name and address for the record.
I'm Matt Anderson, 102 Camden Court North, Hendersonville.
Thank you, sir.
We did come to an agreement to provide a fee in lieu on the sidewalks and it is shown on the cover of the documents.
Any other questions or comments for the applicant?
Mr. Chairman, I appreciate the applicant working with us on the beautification and getting things as we want or as we requested and with that, I'll make a motion to accept or submit it.
I have a motion to accept or submit it. Do we have a second?
Second.
A second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Items four and five have been deferred. We will be moving up to item six and item business.
Actually, Mr. Chairman, I need to point something out.
Please, sir.
I think, so, I believe when it left my hands, the agenda, I know Mr. Leach likes you all to see what's deferred in red and so I was notified that deferred had been placed on four and five, they're actually withdrawn.
They are withdrawn, sir.
Four and five were withdrawn, yeah.
Very good.
I just want to make sure that everybody's aware of that.
Thank you. With that, we'll move on to item number six, under new business. Recommendation of the Board of Mayor and Alderman, rezoning of property requested by TKC Engineering LLC, 15.4 acres, property located at 470 Dick Buchanan Street, tax map 14, parcel 50, current zoning district I3 special use industrial zoning district, proposed zoning district I2 heavy industrial zoning district, property owned by CSJ and Associates LLC. Mr. Logan.
This is a rezoning request on Dick Buchanan Street and formerly, back in 2017, it was actually August, so three years ago this month, we were working with a company, McVantage Packaging Company and they specialize in pallets and they do recycling and refurbishing of pallets all around the world, but anyway, they're located in northern Alabama and they wanted to, they have a Nashville location and they took this site and they worked with the city three years ago to get it rezoned to I3 for special use and, and some of that had to do with the materials that make up the pallets can become flammable and this type of thing. So that was the reason that the I3 designation was necessary, but they did get it rezoned and since that time, I understand the company has decided to just consolidate everything in Muscle Shoals, Alabama, so I believe they have put it on the market and reached out to the current applicant tonight and of course, they're interested in purchasing it. So I3 limits the property because it can only go for the exact use that the, that ultimately the Board of Mayor and Alderman approved in 2017, which was for the pallet company. So for anything else to go there, it's going to have to be rezoned and so that's kind of where we are tonight, but they have requested to go from I3 to I2, another, some discussion at the workshop two weeks ago, but my understanding is that at that time, the Planning Commission asked about I1 and it does appear that many of the uses they would like to do could fit into I1. I think one of their primary uses is going to be the storage of construction trailers or that's one of the uses for a lot of the construction sites, they're located around Nashville, but I understand they may build some buildings also, other parts of the property. So just, that's the history of this parcel, but it is next to the Kite, just north of the Kite Home Improvement Center on Dick Buchanan and this parcel is about a little over 15 acres and see on the zoning map, that different shade of blue is, is just for I3, so these lighter parcels, the light blue is I1, so that seems to be the predominant zoning on most sides, with the exception of this agricultural area that's still zoned to the east of it. So anyway, that's, that's what we know and I know, you know, without rezoning to I1 or I2, it's pretty much, no one can do much with the property until that happens, but I think the applicant is here, so that includes my report.
Thank you very much, sir. Do we have any questions or comments from the board?
This is for staff and Evan may even weigh in on this, but would this be spot zoning considering it's, it would be the only zone in the area for, for this? Could this be considered in that manner?
My, my take on spot zoning and I've sat in several classes with Bill Terry, if any of y'all know Bill Terry, he kind of wrote the book on land use law in Tennessee, but there's not a clear definition of spot zoning in Tennessee, there's not in most states. It's sort of a, it's, it's a big misconception that spot zoning, that giving a property a designation that you're not giving the next door neighbor automatically means that it can go to court and, you know, I guess, like Bill Terry would say, you could, everybody's free to sue anybody at any time, right? You can always get sued, but that doesn't mean you're going to win. So I mean, the, the spot zoning is sort of, it's, it's, there's, there's no definition in state law and I remember the first time I sat in one of those classes at a conference and, and I realized that, I was like, wow, that's a, that's, that's quite a big deal.
Mayor, let me, and just, Bo's exactly right, it really, this, this is going to sound like a dumb answer and maybe it is, but it's really not spot zoning unless a court says that it's spot zoning. Now, when you, there are lots of different factors that a court would look at if somebody wanted to challenge a zoning and claim that it's spot zoning, but I don't think there's any way for staff to say on the front end whether it's spot zoning or not. That's maybe not a good answer, but it's the only way.
Very good. Thank you, gentlemen. Any other questions or comments?
I think Mr. Leach had a comment.
Mr. Leach, please, sir.
Just in the interest of giving an opinion piece, typically, at least in the practice I've seen, it's generally based on the intensity of the zoning, so going from an I3, which is considered the most intense zoning we have, the land use wise to an I2 is actually would be a step down, moving it closer to an I1 type designation. So really, with the City of Laverne zoning being the way it is, a lot of the things that they do in I1 would be done in I2, but they basically got grandfathered in on an I1. So as far as the character of use, which is really where a lot of spot zoning cases come in, I2 would fit in this area just as well, it's just our designations and what things are actually used for don't always line up because of some of these grandfathered uses. When you, when you see a spot zoning case and of course Evan would know way more about this than I do, it's, you know, someone put a very high intensity industrial use in the middle of a residential area, that's, that's spot zoning. Putting a slightly less intensive industrial use next to some already industrial uses wouldn't be spot zoning by any definition.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Leach. Any other questions or comments from the board?
I was just thinking, when, when she spoke at the last meeting, she really didn't know what they were going to use the property for yet specifically, she just had some ideas, no tenant or anything like that, so...
The applicant here, I think we have another applicant. If you would state your name and address for the record, sir.
Cole Newton, 1318 Cardinal Avenue, Nashville, Tennessee.
Thank you, sir.
TKC Engineering.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, so just like Mr. Logan said, the guys that own it are a wood pallet manufacturing company and their base operations in north Alabama, they have a smaller operation in Nashville and then they have operations that kind of cover the whole southeast and send pallets all over the world. Nissan is one of their biggest clients, so that's what really kind of drove purchasing the property here and being able to consolidate a lot of their operations in this area to be close to the airport and close to Nissan and to be able to service all their local customers. So on this piece of property, the reason we're asking for I2 is we are, we're proposing to do a warehouse slash business park, so anywhere between 6 and 10,000 square foot buildings, we think we can get four to five of them on there, holding the rear of the site to house some construction trailers that, that you see it on construction sites, you know, it almost looks like, like a conference room type of atmosphere when you walk in the trailer. The front of the site near the road would be, again, put a, put a road in, a drive-in and off of that, you'd have warehouse slash office. So we're thinking with, like with an 8,000 square foot building, you might have 3,000 square foot as office space, so you go in, you have a couple of offices and a conference room and then you'd have a three to four loading docks for either, I mean, if that's what, that's what the original plan is and customers will dictate that, but have a small office space and a small either warehouse or manufacturing space. And the reason we're asking for I2 is the client would like to keep one of these warehouses to be able to do wood lumber manufacturing. I know that all has to be inside and that's the second allowable use in industrial too and that's really kind of the flexibility here is, one of these spaces that, you know, if we're approved, we'll come in with a site plan and Mr. Logan and I looked at a preliminary site plan, but we would like to keep one of these warehouses to be able to either bring some wood pallets in and, you know, Nissan has things where they want six-foot pallets, they want four-foot pallets, they want boxes made and we could come in with some pallets and in, inside be able to work on them. And we already have two facilities in town where we do that, we'd be like, would hopefully be consolidating if it worked out to one of these warehouse slash manufacturing spaces.
Very nice. Thank you. Cut and cover. Excellent. Any other questions or comments?
So just my comment is, is if it is I2 and you mentioned lumber and wood products and light assembly manufacturing, that fits in I2. What we don't want to do is change the zoning and then they come back in the next month with an application and we can't make it fit because we changed its zoning.
Yes, sir. Thank you, sir. With that, we'll entertain a motion. This will be a favorable or unfavorable recommendation to Mayor and Alderman.
Our recommend, our motion for a recommendation of a favorable recommendation to the Board of Mayor and Alderman.
Yes, sir. We have a motion for a favorable recommendation. We have a second?
Second.
We have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
One nay from Mr. Holliday, correct?
Correct.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Motion passes. Our next item, item number seven. Preliminary plat Bowling Subdivision requested by Womble and Associates, property located at 299 Fergus Road, tax map 14, parcel 27, R1 low-density residential zoning district, property owned by Abnan Shreden. Mr. Logan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a request for approval of a preliminary plat called the Bowling Subdivision and it's located at 299 Fergus Road. So you can see, this is Fergus Road on the screen and the, I believe the Dollar General is just out of sight there, but this is the church, I believe it's Church of Christ there on Fergus and then south of there is a property and then that's, 299 is the next property. And you see the development that's occurring behind, it'd be to the west of this site and that's another housing residential development that's occurring and last month, the applicant was looking at possibly utilizing, well, maybe not directly utilizing, but there'd been discussions over the last couple of months of whether they could use the new road that's being built back here, which is Cash Court, if, if they could use that to help with access and whatnot, but they did do a bit of a redesign after last month, so that, that's in your packets now and before we move on to that, you can see in the zoning map, it is zoned R1, which is low-density residential and that requires 15,000 square foot lots, so it looks like everything on Fergus there, both sides is R1 except the Dollar General, which is up here at the corner. And just some photos, this is the house that still remains on the property and there's the curve in Fergus that was discussed last month as well. So this is the new layout that they've submitted and is in your packet as well, so you can see the curve there in Cash Court or the, it's almost roundabout, except I believe in the center of it, some detention, but so you can see the, the dark gray shape here is the new access that's been proposed, the new, new road and it'll serve a total of four lots, as you can see there on the plan and all the lots are at least 15,000 square feet and they do meet zoning ordinance, so Fergus Road is off to the right of the screen and you can see that there's no access there to Fergus with the new plan and the entire acreage of the site is about 1.4 acres, so relatively small area that we're discussing and there's no technical items, so that completes the report. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Any questions or comments from the board?
I just want to thank the applicant for turning that around, so to say, and getting the traffic off of Fergus. I think that absolutely is a wonderful thing to not add additional traffic directly onto that road, so thank you all for that.
Very good job, gentlemen. Thank you, Mayor.
If I could...
Please, Mr. Holliday.
If, can the city engineer share with us about stormwater on this property and is it the appropriate time or is there any concern that stormwater should be graded to this private road and then on to Cash Court where a stormwater collection system could, could handle it? I mean, it's generally flat, but sometimes flat land can present a problem. Is there anything to consider there?
As this is a preliminary plat, there's not been any grading plans presented, so until they present a, they'll need to prepare construction plans before submitting for a final plat. At that point, I would be able to review and basically give an opinion one way or the other, but I have confidence in Mr. Womble, they'd be able to produce a suitable grading plan.
Excellent. I would just make the comment then that I would like to see the swales that exist on lot 21 and 20 toward the rear of the property, you know, to continue on two and three or consideration for those when they come back with that final grading plan. With that then, I would make a motion to approve as submitted.
A motion to approve as submitted. We have a second?
Second.
We have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. Thank you, gentlemen. Our next item, item number eight. Amendment to site plan racetrack requested by Gresham Smith, property located at 500 Waldron Road, tax map 17O, group A, parcel 2 and 1.01, C2 highway service zoning district, property owned by Racetrack Petroleum, Inc. Mr. Logan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is an amendment to the approved site plan for racetrack and this racetrack is located at 522 Waldron Road, excuse me, it's not located at 522, that's the Twice Daily. This is located at the corner of Waldron Road and Hail Quaker Boulevard and so you can see there in the photo, it's actually two properties, two different parcels. This is a strip retail center at the corner and that's a photo, okay, so that's looking back toward Waldron Road and you see the McDonald's sign above, but this is a strip retail center, I believe there's a State Farm insurance office in there and some other retailers and then this is the view from Hail Quaker. So Racetrack is intending to build a new facility here and then the second parcel behind, well, there we go, I've got a picture of it, that's some of the stores in the retail center that exist today and so this is the second property that's further, be to the north of the corner lot and this is another site, I think they do light manufacturing, can't remember the exact name of it, but basically, all the buildings that you're seeing in these photos would be demolished and then the new racetrack station would be built. And then this was approved, actually, the site plan for it approved in November 2019 and so the primary reason they're here tonight is they would like to make some changes to the architectural elevations and this is a picture here of what was approved in November 2019 and see, it's a majority brick and stone. And you see, it's a majority brick and stone, uh, with a nice look. And so, a few months ago, in the spring, they decided to add some red highlights to the area. And you can see in this photo, um, so I'll, I'll point to them here with the light. Uh, they're darker on this screen, but, um, they're fairly bright red. And actually, the applicant and I spoke before the meeting. And this is a sample of the material that they would use there, um, to, they, if they change the elevation. So pass that around. And, um, other than that, um, that's the primary reason, uh, that they're asking, um, for an amendment to the architectural elevations. And, uh, there's no technical items to cover. So that completes the report. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Logan. Do we have any questions or comments from the board?
I think at the last meeting, Aaron had asked if the colors for the racetrack sign and this were going to match. I don't know that we got an answer to that.
Is there a representative here this evening for this project? State your name and address for the record, sir.
Good evening, members of the board. Victor Sutapahar, Racetrack Petroleum, Tyrone Galleria Parkway, Atlanta, Georgia.
Thank you, sir. So the red highlight and the...
Yes, we're changing from the bronze awning to the red awning just to match our canopy.
Okay. So it's going to be uniform.
Right. Exactly. Just to make aesthetically more pleasing. So it's just matching the canopy because our canopy has the red, white, and blue striping.
Gotcha.
And that's the red in the sign as well?
Correct. But, well, we've always had the red in the sign. That didn't change.
They just appear to be different colors on the...
No, it's, it should be the same. Maybe it's the way it's printed out. It's always been, that's our logo. That's our standard logo. We're just changing the red trimming in there just to match with the canopy. That's what we're doing. It was bronze before that was approved, so...
Thank you, sir. Any other questions or comments?
Just to add a little good news in there, we just managed to get our existing tenants out hopefully in November. So we'll be starting construction soon after that, so...
With approval.
We're looking forward to it.
Thank you. So with that...
Chairman, I'll make a motion to accept or submitted.
We have a motion to accept or submitted.
Our second.
We have a second. All in favor say aye.
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 All opposed? Motion passes. And our final item of business is for Mr. Leach. Bonds and letters of credit, sir.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, Board, the only, uh, real updates of note are that a few of our maintenance bonds are expiring. In September, we were following up with those, prior to those maintenance bonds expiring, making sure any unresolved issues are resolved before they come fully within the city's maintenance. Of course, the other item to note is that we are not adding a lot of buildable lots to the city. There are some in the Ridge Phase 3 that are coming online now. But we're probably, with the current rate of construction and everything, we probably won't add any more lots to the city for at least the next four to five months at current, current rate. So just something to be cognizant of. And, uh, that's basically it.
Thank you very much. And with that, meeting adjourned. Thank you, everyone.